Meeting to order and welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission January 28, 2020 meeting at 6:00 PM. Time is now 6:49. We will be getting started. Our first item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the November 26, 2019 regular meeting.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve. We have a second. We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And we will move on to our first item. Item number one, site plan, Skyline Exhibitor Source requested by Hudson Steel, property located at 144 Bain Drive, tax map 14, parcel 7.02, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by John A. Hamari. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This request is for an addition to an existing building. And this is the Skyline Exhibitor Source building that's located at 144 Bain Drive. And it is zoned I-2 Heavy Industrial. And start there with the zoning map here on the screen. So this is the lot that's in question. And this white line is Longview Street. And you can see that it still shows up here. This is the cul-de-sac of Longview Street. And this right-of-way was abandoned a while back in 2019. And that helped pave the way for this addition. So in the photo here, this area, the building kind of stair steps back, I guess you would say, the older part of the building here with, looks like it's got maybe concrete block and metal. And then this, what is today, the end of the building is all metal in the back. So the addition is going in this street area. And there's a picture of the whole area. So Longview is to the right, Longview Street in this picture. But again, that right-of-way was abandoned. So the latest plan is on the screen. And these two areas are existing, this area and this area are the existing buildings. So Bain is over here to the right. And then the proposed addition is going back here in the rear. And it's supposed to be about 44,000 square feet. And there are just a few items at the workshop and a few landscaping items for planning. And then Mr. Leach had a couple of items, but they've all been addressed with their latest supplemental. That's some of the elevations, black and white elevations of what the building will look like in the future. And as I said, all technical items have been addressed, so I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? No questions? We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Our second, that.
We have a motion to approve, seconded by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On to our next item. Item number two, site plan, Archangel Michael Coptic Orthodox Church requested by Civil and Environmental Engineering Services, LLC. Property located at 181 Cherokee Drive, tax map 17C, Group E, parcel 11.03, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Archangel Michael Coptic Orthodox Church. Mr. Logan.
This request is to expand the existing facilities at the Archangel Michael Coptic Church on Cherokee Drive. And the property is zoned R1, which is low-density residential. And currently, Laverne churches can locate in just about any district as long as they go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and receive a special exception. So this church has done that. And they show, the current plan is for a two-story building. And it would total about 17,700 square feet, so almost 18,000. And it would be built in the area that you see here. And I've got some photos in just a minute that shows, this is mainly a parking area right now. So the new building and the parking lots would go in this area. And also on that plan shows a second ingress egress that goes out to JFK Drive. So they already own, the church already owns this appendage to their larger lot. And so they don't have to pick up any more real estate to get the ingress egress. But there will be a separate driveway onto JFK. And so these are some of the photos of the site today. So this is existing parking that's asphalt. And then this surface up here is rock and some gravel. It's, I guess you would say, it's kind of a temporary surface, was kind of put down as a temporary surface. So if this project is approved, then a new building would sit here. And the parking area would go away. Of course, they're building new parking lots. But I can see some of their vans that were parked on the site. And there's another picture of their, some of their vehicles parked on the site. As you can see, it's just a rough surface right now. And they've had some erosion controls in place up there along Cherokee. So this picture is looking back toward the church. So this is the existing building and the roof. So they're kind of up the hill looking back toward the existing church. And one item that they hope to alleviate is some of the parking that's gone on over the years, some of the parking issues. And so there's quite a bit of parking proposed with this plan. And you can see, this image shows the driveway that goes out to JFK. And as I understand, the two-story building will contain a gymnasium and have classrooms and things of that sort. So I think that completes the report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board in regards to this item?
Yes, Chair. I've got a few questions.
Mayor Cole.
Mr. Logan or Mr. Leach, are there lights indicated on these plans?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, the back, want to say four to five pages, they're labeled SP, are all the illumination plans. The illumination that was specified here is a downward-facing lighting style, which will provide, I think, the maximum I saw was maybe 2.8 candle feet. For reference, a open window is about 100, or excuse me. This room, if I was guessing, would be right around 200 candle feet. So that's going to be a, it'll be lit, but it will not be excessively bright, is kind of what I'm trying to get at. Candle feet's kind of a hard unit to conceptualize, but it'd be like a very, very dim room.
Very good. Any other questions?
I have a comment. The residents that I spoke to in the area, they still have the concern with the, I guess the traffic survey, Adam, on that entrance. So are we not, are we not requiring them to put in the turning lane like we've done on Stones River?
There wasn't really, based on the traffic that we see out there on a Sunday, because it was checked on the traffic, it just wasn't really justified. The one on Stones River, that's a much busier road than Cherokee is on a Sunday. And when I talk about how busy a road is, we're talking traffic volumes in the thousands opposed to Cherokee, which is in the hundreds. So it's, it's a little bit superfluous, honestly, for this kind of project. And with the amount of parking provided, you know, even if it did stack up, it wouldn't be a huge issue, just through that low-volume roadway.
And with the parking area that's been left unattended, that came in front of the board previous years, are we going to run into that same problem with this type of construction? Have you talked to the builders?
Parking lot left unattended. I can't speak to the, to the operations of it. Most of the time, if there's parking available, people are going to choose to not park on the road. I mean, that kind of common sense type stuff there. As far as the condition that it's in, where they kind of built up their parking lot there to the right side of the building and left it in stone, I don't know what caused them to stop their construction. I do know that they stopped their construction. And I had to issue a couple of warnings about fixing up some of their stormwater erosion control measures, which were addressed by, by the church at that time. So we, on private sites, we can't really, well, we can't even compel people to build public stuff. We just get bonds for the public stuff. So if they stop construction, they just stop. So it could have been a funding issue, or it could have been disrooming with contractor. I don't know the entirety of the backstory there.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Leach. Any other questions? With that, we will entertain a motion.
I make a motion we deny.
A motion to deny. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
We'll do a roll call vote, I think.
Roll call vote, please, sir. Mr. Halliday.
Motion to deny.
Motion to deny at the moment.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
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 Nay.
One, two, three. What is that, Mr. Logan? If you would.
Oh, I was just in my head, counting.
Four, three.
It's approved, four to three. Four to three. Motion does not pass. We'll be moving on to the next item. Thank you all. Roll calls, but votes get a little confusing sitting in this position when you're walking down the line.
So the motion did pass.
Motion passed to deny. Yes, sir.
Right.
Next item, item number three, first item under new business. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman rezoning of property requested by Womble and Associates, 8.33 acres, property located on Bill Stewart Boulevard, tax map 14, parcel 36, current zoning district R1, Low Density Residential Zoning District, proposed zoning district PDR, Planned Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Adnan Shreeman. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So you all remember from the workshop, the location of this project is beside the fire station on Bill Stewart Boulevard. It's a fire station number three. And there's about three parcels involved in this project, and you can see them there on the screen. So it's a, right now, all undeveloped and a very thick wood, thick woods throughout the area. There's a new, it is zoned R2, by the way, currently, as is most of that area, and the fire hall as well, zoned R2. Here's some site photos. Fire hall is just to your right. So this heavily wooded area is where we're looking at. And so this is looking north from the driveway, the fire hall. I'm in the driveway, the fire hall, and that's north. And here's Bill Stewart to the left. And then this is the new layout from, you remember this from last month, and there were some comments. One of the comments was about attaching the, some of these units were left standing alone, and there was discussion about attaching those. So applicant has done that. And they've also shown some other, other changes there to Bill Stewart Boulevard. The, the total acreage for the site's 8.33 acres. And this, this plan calls for different types of housing, but it would include townhomes and the square buildings are, I believe they're called them quadruplexes, but they're basically, basically square and have a unit more or less in each corner. So those, those were talked about at the workshop two weeks ago. But they showed detention area also in this corner of the site, which is the northwest corner next to Bill Stewart Boulevard. So I believe for this rezoning, that pretty much covers the report. There's no technical items, of course, since it's a rezoning, so we'll be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from Mr. Logan or Mr. Leach?
I have a question for Mr. Leach. So the drawings there on Bill Stewart, is that where we're doing the, the traffic turn-in as we discussed it?
Right. So what Mr. Womble has shown there is basically just a striped-in turn. Currently, the, I had to go out there and look and measure a little bit myself. We've got about a 33-foot section there, so there's sufficient room to place a left-turn lane as he's drawing it. Of course, that actual positioning will get kind of further refined once we get into construction plans and stuff. And we'll probably put a little, little finer taper coming off of it on the other side of it. But yeah, I believe it wouldn't be any problem to stripe that in.
And I didn't see on here, were we able to grow any of the Station 3's parking area back there in the back?
Well, that wouldn't typically be shown on this type of, at this point, since it would be an off-site improvement. It could be a request, once it comes in, for its actual plat with its construction plans. But this is more of a conceptual zoning type thing instead of a technical plans-based thing.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Cole.
Chair, I've got a question for the engineer.
Would the applicant please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Danny Womble, 40 Middleton Street, Nashville, Tennessee.
Wanted to inquire with the drainage over in the corner, I know we've, we've got another development where residents have expressed some concerns. So I wanted to find out, just to confirm, for the buffering around the stormwater treatment area, will that be viewable easily from the street? We have another area that I know these gentlemen are familiar with, they get calls all the time, about down Stones River Road, close to Vaughn Wood, about their detention ponds, so.
Right. Well, if you look at the master plan on sheet three in the booklet, you can see there on the left-floor corner, the blue area is the stormwater treatment area. So along the perimeter on the left side, you can see all of the landscape trees that we've drawn, that we've drawn in on the plan between the detention basin and the adjacent property owners. So that will be screened. We've added the screening, additional screening along Bill Stewart Boulevard that we were asked to do in the workshop meeting. So from Bill Stewart Boulevard, you really won't be able to see the detention or from the neighbor's house. Now, from the interior of the development, we're showing some shrubs and some trees, and we can add more if that's a concern. But I believe we've screened it well from the street and from the neighbor.
Okay. Thank you. That, that was my concern. I've been fielding several phone calls for the last few days on that with, with one of our other developments. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Womble? Mr. Mayor Cole?
Mr. Chairman, if there are no other questions, make a motion to approve.
Make a motion if there are no other questions to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
It'll be a recommendation.
Recommendation.
Recommendation to approve. I apologize, it's rezoning.
Motion to make a favorable, favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
One no. Motion passes. On to our next item. Item number four. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman rezoning of property requested by Michael Bannister, 9.5 acres, property located on Sanford Road, tax map 18, I'm sorry, tax map 28, parcel 1.01, current zoning district A Agricultural, proposed zoning district R2, medium-density residential zoning district, property owned by Chow Nguyen Dong. Mr. Logan.
Mr. Chairman, they have deferred.
This item has deferred. Thank you. And on to our next item, item number five. Site plan, Twice Daily requested by Goodwin Mills &amp; K. Wood, Inc., property located at 522 Waldron Road, tax map 17, parcel 12, C2 Highway Service zoning district, property owned by Rojo Properties. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So this site plan request is the, currently, it's the Crystal site, and the Crystal's been closed for quite a while now. But the plan is to build a new Twice Daily gas station at this location and demolish the Crystal building. And the, the new building for Twice Daily would be 4,800 square feet. And so it is zoned C2 currently, and you can see in this photo, it's this area right here. And so there's some C2 beside it, there's a hotel beside it that's zoned C2. Here's some site photos from two weeks ago. Just a large parking area there for the old Crystal. And this was the drive-through lane and the menu board. And then this would be the interstate side or the west side of the building, parking area. And I've gone ahead and uploaded the new plan for Twice Daily, and so that's what's on the screen. And you can see, so this is Enterprise Boulevard here. And if you're coming into the site, they're also going to serve coffee, so there'll be a drive-through for coffee, and that's called White Buffalo. So you can see, you enter here on the north side of the building, and then the lane wraps around, and the pickup window would be on the south side of the building. And they're showing parking all around, and the parking is adequate. And they're showing eight gas pumps, so they could hold up to 16 vehicles at one time under the canopy. And they have vacuums next to the Enterprise Boulevard. The, this location is intended to serve passenger vehicles and light trucks. There's no, there's no plan to serve heavy trucks or diesel, large diesel trucks of that sort. So here's the gas island, little close-up with the canopy. They have, they do show a sidewalk on Enterprise, and since the workshop, they've added, let's see if I can pick it up here. Yeah, oh, so it's there, it's not showing up. At any rate, they've added a sidewalk. Oh, I guess it's off the page. They've added a sidewalk down to about here. I tried to zoom in to give everybody the best shot, but somewhere in here, the sidewalk would end, and that gets into the interchange pretty heavy. So T-Dot probably has a, you know, something to say about that. But they are, they have added some sidewalk segments. So these are the architectural elevations. And they show quite a bit of brick, and the materials board, the same one from two weeks ago, is back up there tonight. So they show quite a bit of brick, and then they have an aluminum panel that sort of outlines their main sign and kind of, the aluminum paneling would be put around the main entrance. And it looks more like a wood grain-type paneling. So there's a close-up of the elevations. And then this is the drive-through for the coffee. And then these are the other sides of the building. And I think there were just a few technical items at the workshop, and they've all been addressed. So that completes the report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments from the board on this item?
I have a couple of questions for Adam.
Mr. Chairman.
Does this meet the proper zoning and everything for this establishment?
Well, that, that would be a both question, but I'll, I'll answer for him. C2 commercial does allow, you know, gas stations outright.
And with the traffic density with the light there, does it also, would it, would it change the effects of that intersection?
Not any different from when Crystal was operating, so it's essentially the same traffic load it would have had if the restaurant had been open.
All right. Thank you.
And last time, Mr. Coats requested that I calculate the cost and fee and lieu in case that T-Dot wouldn't allow the sidewalk to go on their corner clip. I forgot to put it in, but I did have it calculated. It was $4,730. So that'll, we can add that to the record as necessary.
And that's for the section that we're not allowed to touch, correct?
We don't know if they want it touched or not. That would be a, T-Dot may, Mary may not care for what our opinion happens to be.
So we would collect the fee and lieu if they're not allowed?
Right. He hasn't shown that they intend to build it if they can, but if they can't, we would collect the fee and lieu.
And it's all dependent upon T-Dot.
T-Dot. Do we need to include that in any motions?
As I make a comment, I'm really concerned about the, the additional traffic I think it'll bring greater than Crystal. And the entrance is, is a lot closer to Waldron for the amount of traffic they're going to get. So I have a real concern of safety on that corner of Enterprise and Waldron.
Good. Any other questions or comments?
What about the, the vacuums? Is that the only place that they can go? Is that the front of the property?
I think that was the designer's choices where to put them, I mean.
And address it in the workshop.
My guess is that would be the most convenient electrically.
Well, I, I looked at that, too. That's what I look at with any gas station. What I see is we, we kind of trade off, they got to have the dumpster somewhere, and I feel like if they tried to move those, then you're going to have the dumpster up by the street. So it's like the lesser of two evils.
Very good.
Do we have to have the vacuums?
Pretty normal thing. If you would, sir, please come to the podium and state your name and address for Adam, please.
My name is Randy Harper with Goodwin Mills &amp; K. Wood, 3310 West End Avenue, Nashville, Tennessee, Suite 420.
Yes, thank you.
In reference to, to vacuums, we're not proposing any vacuums on-site. We do have one air machine, and it is in the back corner, basically across the drive aisle, and it In reference to vacuums, we're not proposing any vacuums on-site. We do have one air machine, and it is in the back corner, basically across the drive aisle and at last parking space, across from the dumpster.
Okay.
In the back. So, no vacuums are planned.
So, that is, that's not a vacuum up on the front?
No, sir. It's just the air vent, or the vent stack for the, for the pumps.
For the USTs?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Good, thank you. That helps out a lot. Any other questions or comments?
Sidewalk that's existing appears to be possibly a five-foot wide sidewalk, and all proposed sidewalks that are being added are six-foot wide sidewalks. That's going to create a, you know, a difference there. Is there any possibility that we could get a uniform width of the sidewalk upon completion of the project?
Mr. Leach?
All commercial sidewalks per the sidewalk regulation ought to be six-foot wide on C2 property. Now, older developments, et cetera, they used to be five feet, so typically when you connect, you just try to taper them in and make a smooth connection.
Very good. Any other questions?
At the workshop, Mayor Cole had made a pretty valid point that, you know, considering the businesses that are already there and other projects that had come before this board, we're looking at a total of six gas stations in a very close area. That being said, I'm not really sure how, what other kind of businesses we're looking at putting there. If, you know, this doesn't go in, it's, it could very, it could very well be an empty lot for a long time.
That's a good reality and good statement, sir. Any other questions or comments? No questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion on this item.
Make a motion to deny based on, this does not enhance the quality and character of the surrounding area.
Have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Mr. Coats. All in favor say aye.
No.
Can we do a roll call?
Absolutely. Mr. Holliday? We have a motion to deny.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
No.
That is-
Four to three.
Four to three. Motion passes. On to our next item. Item number six. Site plan, Pickney Wholesale Facility requested by Robert Pickney. Property located on Old Nashville Highway, Tax Map 15M, Group D, Parcel 9. C2 Highway Service zoning district, property owned by BNF Partners. Mr. Logan.
This item's deferred.
Thank you, sir. Next item, item number seven. Site plan, Auto Tire Shop at 5493 Murfreesboro Road requested by Check Roads. Property located at 5493 Murfreesboro Road, Tax Map 18B, Group D, Parcel 1. C2 Highway Service zoning district, property owned by Shams, Inc. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This request is for site plan approval. This is a change of use of an existing building at 5493 Murfreesboro Road. This is really close to Walmart. This is the Walmart building here, and this is the parking area for Walmart. So, it's just about two properties off. It doesn't touch it, but it almost does. And the existing building is two-story. There's a photo. Currently has a, just a shingle roof on it and vinyl siding. Has two bay doors on the Nashville side of the building, on the northwest side, and then two bay doors that front Murfreesboro Road. And it also has a door to nowhere, which was brought up two weeks ago. The, there's a shot of the front of the building. Again, just a green roof and yellow, light yellow siding. So, here's an overview of the site plan. This property is Zone C2, so it's a commercial zoning already. And zoom in here. So, this plan shows the space that would be used for offices only 450 square feet. And then it looks like they have 2,218 square feet on the second floor. And they are showing their parking, and they've updated the ADA accessible parking. They're showing with this new layout, a ingress egress to Mercury only. And that was brought up at the last workshop, that they should change that, so they have. And they're showing this sidewalk along Murfreesboro Road, so they're going to install that. And this image shows their proposed architectural elevations. And these colors here are on the color palette that's laying right there for you all to look at. And they also brought a brick sample, which is, thank you, sir. The brick sample is up there, I think it's on the floor. And then they did surprise me, but they brought in a sample of metal roofing, and that's up there as well. I brought all that down for you all. We had not discussed at length, two weeks ago, the roof. But my take on it would be that the shingle roof would look a lot better, be a little bit more inviting for that district than a metal roof. But if, you know, I don't know. That's just one opinion. But anyway, this, all these are included in your packets, so you all can look more closely at them. The use that they're proposing is for a tire shop and auto service shop. So, the way the zoning ordinance stands today, those uses are allowed in C2. Auto repair is no longer allowed in C2. And I think if there's anything else that's changed. I think, I think that pretty much covers everything. They, they've done, they've done a fair amount of work, at least since the workshop, to change, change the plan, especially with this ingress egress here on the Mercury. So, we have to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions for staff?
Mr. Logan, where's the dumpster going to be placed on this? I don't see any spot designated for trash collection.
Don't see one either. They would have to locate it. Well, they're really, as far as the truck picking it up, they would have to locate it somewhere in this area.
Let's bring the applicant or the engineer up, if you would. State your name and address for the record, gentlemen, if you don't mind.
Good evening. My name is Philip Burns, 3275 Ashwood Road, Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. I believe the question is, is where do you plan on putting the refuse dumpster?
Yes, I apologize for leaving that off, but it'll be just to the, I believe that's the west of the concrete slab. And we had talked about it, and I just neglected to show it. The landscaping, I don't know if Mr. Logan has the landscaping plan on, on his-
I do not.
Okay, but the landscaping is actually going to go behind parking space si, six and seven, and it's going to go straight across to the concrete slab so that the dumpster is hidden from view from the back. And of course, you won't be able to see it, you know, because the cars parked and the existing trees will remain. We're not getting rid of any of those.
I'm going to assume it's going to have its own pad?
Yes, yes, it will. It'll be a concrete pad and a concrete rollout pad in front of that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, at least on the, the site plans that I've got, it does not show that, that mentioned landscaping. It stops just with the spots seven and six. It does not continue to go across to the concrete slab. And I would think for-
Yeah, we need it documented.
Would normally have the concrete slab on here as well.
As well, yes, sir.
And I don't know, Mr. Leach, was that factored in with calculations for any stormwater issues?
As it stands, with them kind of losing their front driveway, they, they're kind of evened out on their impervious surface, so it, there weren't really much calculations to do. It's kind of like with like. They're, they're pre-equals, they're post, just naturally in this case.
Okay, well, personally, at least, I would like to see that on the plans before moving forward on anything with this.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. Mr. Coats is probably going to reiterate.
Yeah, I mean, my, my common sense item is, knowing it's going to be a tire store, and we all been to get tires, there just isn't enough car parking spaces. I mean, that's just the logistics. I mean, they may meet the requirement for the square footage, but we also, we all know what happens is you drop the car off, and you come back and get it, or normally you do. So, you know, there is more parking available. I'd like to see creative car parking put in to the drawing, as well as obviously the landscaping to match as we normally require.
Very good.
I appreciate, appreciate the ownership working with us on the Mercury Drive access. I think that's a good idea. But I think we need to work on this a little bit more to get it where it needs to be.
I agree. Traditionally, we don't approve anything on contingency, so having to add something to the plan that we don't have in front of us, we're voting on what's in front of us. If we could possibly get a deferral, come back next month, let's address these couple of items, and we'll proceed forward. But we're moving in a very good direction, and thank you very much for working with us and doing everything we've asked.
Now, just only one item left.
It looks like it's going to be the dumpster, the landscaping, the dumpster pad are the items that-
Dumpster pad and landscaping.
Is that correct, Mr. Logan?
And some parking, and parking.
Additional parking.
Yes. So, Mr. Logan, do they meet with the seven spaces? They meet the requirement with the two-story building?
As far as I know, the calculations are fine. I mean, they don't-
And, and I agree completely with you, Mr. Coats, in that you do run out of parking space, and I think all of us have been in that situation where you run out. So, possibly add some more parking for us, add the landscaping, the dumpster and dumpster pad. Mr. Cole?
I have a question for legal. Is, if they meet the requirements with our city ordinance for the parking, is it okay for us to ask for more parking?
They're not, well, I guess it depends on what the position of the applicant is. I suppose there's no prohibition against asking, but the question really is, can you require it? The answer would be no.
Okay.
Nothing stops you from asking, but if you deny it based on their failure to agree to do it, then that would not be right.
And if we, Bruce, if you'll add that to the minutes that this board, that we cannot really ask them to add more parking, they do meet the requirements.
Well, point, we could ask.
Yeah, we could, we could add, we can't require it.
Correct. If you ask and they, and they agree, then it's fine.
Okay.
If you ask and they say no, you know, you can't require them to do more than what's in the ordinance.
And also, the comment is, is they're minimums. So, you know, there is space available, we've asked, if they put it in, you know, fair enough. If there was restricted parking, there were no car, other car park spaces, I could understand, but with this property as it's positioned, there is space available, and I think as a business, they're going to use it.
That was my concern when, with going in first, asking about it, because that, where they stated that the dumpster will go, looks like a perfect spot to park. Basically, to drive in through the grass before we even knew where it was going to go.
And you may change, change stuff up a little bit with these couple of requests, but the dumpster pad and dumpster landscaping, definitely. We would appreciate some more parking if possible. I'm, I'm sure you all will be more than happy to accommodate. And all I need is a request for deferral, and we'll see y'all at workshop, and we'll work on this again next month. Request for deferral. Thank you.
We request the deferral.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. We will see y'all in a couple of weeks. On to our next item. Item number eight. Final plat, Central Park Commercial, Phase 2, requested by Wamboldt Associates. Property located on Veterans Memorial Parkway, Tax Map 14, Parcel 72.04. C2 Highway Service zoning district, property owned by Ridgeland South, LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a final plat approval. It is located at Veterans Memorial Parkway and Murfreesboro Road. And it is Zone C2 already. You can see the zoning map. And it's just this property to the east of Veterans Memorial, so not the property to the west, but they're linked in the GIS. So, when Todd made the map, both parcels have to be highlighted, but it's just that one to the east of Veterans Memorial. And here's some photos. See the townhomes in the distance. And another shot of the townhomes in this lighting here, this high mass lighting is at the city park, some of the ballfields back there. And so, this is what the entrance sign currently looks like at the corner of Veterans Memorial and Murfreesboro Road. This is the Villas of Central Park. And getting to the plat, so this was last, or the initial submittal showed Lot 1 and 2, and then this is Veterans Memorial, and here's Murfreesboro Road. So, this easement was shown two weeks ago, and you'll remember that the applicant mentioned that it would be coming off. So, this is what it now looks like and what was submitted and is in your packets. Each lot is about four acres, give or take. I think lot, I think Lot 2 is 4.56 acres. And the flood note, which stated that it's not in any special flood hazard area, that was included. And the sidewalk along Murfreesboro Road will be required as part of the site plan submittal. And there were no technical items, I think, Mr. Leach, anything, so that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from staff from the Board?
Mr. Chair, I've just got a comment.
Please, sir.
With this, I think at workshop, we kind of got the cart before the horse. This is a simple final plat to subdivide. This isn't any, as far as going in an approval for any schools, for any businesses. This is just simply subdividing that lot, and I think that was missed at the last meeting. There was a lot of focus on a school coming in when all this is, is just dividing the property.
Thank you. With that, any other questions or comments? If there being none, we'll entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion we approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On to our next item. Item number nine. Final plat, horizontal property regime. The cottages of Lake Forest, Phase 7, Lot 7022, requested by Wamboldt Associates, P-L-L-C. Property located off Arlene Drive, Tax Map 14, PO Parcel 6. R3 High Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Laverne LF Holdings LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is horizontal property regime request for approval, and all this property is zoned R3 and is located north of Sand Hill Drive and actually located along Arlene Drive. And you can see there, as we zoom out, that this is, it's this area right here that's outlined in the blue. So these are all existing townhomes that are already built, located around it. And this is just a formality to approve this HPR. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Any questions or comments from the board? Mr., who is the representative? Mr. Womble? I have an intuitive question, I guess you would say, more from my knowledge than anything else. Danny Womble, correct?
Danny Womble, 40 Milton Street, Nashville, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. This project is not completed, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the reason I ask is because in the past, we did one that was a completed project. So what's the, what's kind of the difference there in prior to and afterwards? Just change of plans by the developer?
Well, if a project is before you that's already been built, then that would be just making a change that has occurred during construction. But the plating process has to occur before you can pull the building permit, because the plating enables each unit then to be permitted as a unit that will then be sold to a buyer. And if it's all permitted without that plating, then it's an apartment building for rent only. And these are gonna be for sale to the end users, so we're proposing this plat in order to set everything up before it's permitted, before it's built, to meet all of your codes to be sold to individual buyers. So it's a different code, different firewall requirements between the units, if it's gonna be for sale versus rental.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I have one other question, Mr. Chairman. This is just to confirm what's already on the paper. With this, Arlene Drive will continue to be a private drive. Is that correct?
Yes, it will.
Wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If there are none, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion accept or submitted.
We have a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Onto our next item. Number 10. Subdivision acceptance, cottages of Lake Forest, Phase 4. Property located off Nixon Way, requested by the Heinz Group, R3 High Density Residential Zoning District. Mr. Logan?
Thank you. This is a request for subdivision acceptance for the cottages of Lake Forest, Phase 4. And it is located off Nixon Way. So here's the, the imagery shows this area outlined in blue. And the, the plan shows that there's 116 units total in the development. And kind of a close-up there, showing the area. So the staff, the other city staff has notified me that the checklist has been completed and that everything is in order for acceptance, so thank you.
Very good. Questions or comments from the board in regards to this item?
Yeah, I have a comment. The, on the backside, it had some, some high manhole covers. Was that addressed?
They were high prior to them topping it out, but once they topped out, everything's finished flush.
Did that just get done over the last couple of weeks?
No.
It was late last year.
Okay.
Make a motion to move on to the acceptance of the subdivision.
We have a motion for acceptance of the subdivision. We have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Chairman, just to address this one, for the, the discussion we had at workshop, I'll prefer to defer this, and I'm gonna bring it back to workshop for more discussion.
Very good. Discussion item policy for installations of new sidewalks presented by Mr. Coats will be deferred for further discussion at workshop. If we have any thoughts or comments on that subject, please get them over to Adam or Mr. Logan, so that they can be presented to us at workshop. And our final item is bonds and letters of credit. Mr. Leach?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in the back of your packet, you'll see a somewhat small but complete list of all of our outstanding bonds, letters of credit, et cetera. What you'll note is that we have lots that we accepted. You know, I've been a part. A whole lot of loose lots in Laverne right now, so that means, you know, we're kind of in the process of getting some new developments going, but at the moment, there's just not a whole lot of, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of home building going, but compared to what it's been, it's significantly slower than what we have been probably in the past, I don't know, five years, Randolph? So, just a, just a note, kind of where we're at on a development standpoint. And that's it.
Very good. Finally, as board members, have we have down a date for training? Mr. Logan?
29th.
The 29th?
February. Saturday, 8:00 a.m.
Saturday, 29th at 8:00 a.m.
And that will be a multipurpose?
No, in the stormwater.
Our building.
Building. 5175 Murfreesboro Road.
Thank you. All right, I'm sure we'll discuss that again. Any other questions or comments? I know we lost the multipurpose building. Thank you all. Good night. Meeting adjourned.